Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to City Hall for tonight's special city council meeting. The meeting is called to order, and I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Here.
Berghardt?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Cavan?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Kosarag?
Here.
Maladra?
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Alderman Maladra has a lovely excuse. He and Mrs. Maladra are in Italy for two weeks. I think he was sharing that with Dean and I last week. They went separately, but nevertheless, they're going to have a good time. With that, folks, our items of business include item 2A, consider approval of resolution number 2022-83 authorizing a tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with Isaac's Upholstery and Furniture at 8:30 East State Street in beautiful Geneva, Illinois. Motion by Mr. Swanson, second by, forgive me, I didn't see that, for mayor. Anything, questions? We discussed this at great length last week, Tuesday. Mr. Kosarag?
Do you have just one question. If the TIF were to get extended, which I know is a big if, would the deadline on this agreement be extended, or does it end when this version of the TIF ends?
Well, in the agreement, it has a deadline for it to expire, so it would expire at the end of that date, which I think is December 2024, unless the council took action to extend that date.
Okay.
It would not just automatically extend.
That was my only question. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion. Swanson, the second mayor. A roll call vote is in order. Madam Clerk? Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Berghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
With nine votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and one absent, item 2A has been approved. Item 2B, consider approval of resolution number 2022-84 expressing official intent regarding certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from proceeds of one or more obligations to be issued by the City of Geneva, Kane County, Illinois. Is there a motion?
So.
Ooh, Marx and Mayor. Is that what you like? Rich is a what? You got that, Madam Clerk? Yes, I do. All of it. All of it. Every last bit. Any questions or comments, ladies and gentlemen? Hearing none, seeing none, sensing none. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the roll. Excuse me. Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Berghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Item 2B has been adopted by this city council with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We jump down to item C, as in Charlie, and that is the presentation of the citywide drainage base study. We have our Director of Public Works, Mr. Babica, who, of course, will introduce the other distinguished guests with us.
I have Brian Davis with me, the city engineer, and Greg Chismark, WBK, our principal consultant on this project. Before Greg comes up to do the presentation, just want to give a little background to everybody. This study that was recently completed has been over three years in the making. We initiated the study in the summer of 2019, and then about two weeks after that, we were diluted with about a two-and-a-half, three-inch rainfall event within a matter of hours, within day, workday. And so it immediately gave us a strong factual background to start the study off with. And it also provided a lot of community input, both from businesses, residents, government officials, and other government bodies. The purpose of this study is to provide a budget planning document for the future of the city. It is a holistic, comprehensive approach. It looked at not only where the city drains, into what areas and how it drains, but also what drains into the city. So the flow that's coming in out of St. Charles, West Chicago, and even portions of Batavia. And what our hoping goal is, is that this snapshot of the city's drainage system is going to provide future staff, as well as the future city councils throughout the budget planning processes, to make better informed decisions of what has been identified as problems, what has been identified as perceived issues, and being able to historically contextualize this knowledge so it's not lost for the future. With that, I'm going to ask Greg Chismark to come up to the podium. He's going to give a brief presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chismark. Good to see you again.
Good evening. Greg Chismark, WBK Engineering. I have a presentation.
Greg was teasing prior to the meeting that he always makes presentations immediately following a rain event.
I do.
So the timing is perfect.
And by the way, I thought item C was for Chismark.
Well, you know, I thought about that. Well, that's kind of cheesy. So I thought, but good one.
Okay. I will get the presentation up and going. Again, Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for your attention tonight. In the next 20 or so minutes, I'm going to run through a high-level overview of the drainage study. As Rich mentioned, it was two-plus years in the making, culminating, working with staff, working with the residents of the city as well, and preparing the study. Going to go through the process we looked at, run through a couple of brief examples of some issues we found, and talk about the deliverables that we presented as far as this study is concerned. So I'm going to start right away. This is one of the deliverables that staff asked us to present, and that is a comprehensive look at where drainage challenges and concerns are throughout the city. So this map represents 25 distinct areas throughout the city, and you can see they're spread on both east and west sides. There are some dots, and there are some color-shaded areas. The dots are more isolated, distinct project areas. The color-shaded areas are, we'll say, more neighborhood-type concerns or area-type concerns that we had identified. Starting with this, how did we get here? What was the analysis we did? What's the capital plan that looks to resolve these issues? That's what we'll be talking about here today. One of the things that's not on this map that you won't see, and I want to make sure is clear that we represent, is one of the things we didn't find, it's not on the map, is there is no significant regular residential structure flooding in Geneva. You don't have, and we didn't find, houses becoming flooded on a regular basis. In some communities east of here, especially after the rainfall yesterday, we might have seen on the news, that occurs, or neighborhoods going underwater, roadways becoming impassable for long periods of time. Again, we didn't find that. That's not to say there aren't challenges, concerns that should be addressed. We didn't find that magnitude of drainage issues here in the city of Geneva. So I just wanted to, it's not showing up on the map, I want to make sure that was clear and identified. So there really were three main steps in the process that we followed to come to this drainage study. The first was outreach and data collection, and that's what this slide is all about. Could talk about analysis, and then the capital plan, which is the other major deliverable for this study. The graphic on the upper left is a little detail of how we went through the process. The map below it, though, the map that shows the corporate boundaries of the city, has a couple of different shadings that represent the watersheds within the city boundaries, and there's three of them. On the far east side, in the pink shading, is Crest Creek watershed. Of course, the Fox River right through the middle is in blue, and Milk Creek, the orange shaded on the west side. This graphic happens to be a screenshot from Social Pinpoint. That was the web portal that we had created to solicit resident feedback on where drainage issues were around the city. So this is screenshot of that feedback and where that feedback was sought throughout the city. So again, you can see it's relatively generally dispersed around the city. And we found that the Social Pinpoint media was a success. We also sought to characterize the type of drainage issue people were experiencing, whether it was property, roadway, erosion-related, and/or water quality. I will tell you, we had nobody respond on water quality throughout the city, and I don't think that's to suggest that residents don't care. I think it's more a reflection that we're presenting a flooding drainage study, so people responded to that. But we did ask about water quality, if there was a significant concern within the city. In addition to the web portal, we did also host an open house in October at Public Works. We had over 33 residents come in and provide us information. Some of it was redundant, what we received on Social Pinpoint, but some of it was not. So it goes to show that an in-person meeting is still successful. That was during the time of COVID. So we followed all CDC guidelines, of course. We had resident input. We got some photos, some data we had not received through the web portal. So that was successful. And then the last really major element was that Mother Nature helped us with the rainfall event Rich alluded to, that created, right as we were beginning our study, a lot of drainage issues throughout the city. So at that time, we worked jointly with city staff responding to resident concerns. It allowed us to gather data, take photos, develop, I'll call them problem statements on what people saw, understand the history behind some of the things that residents were experiencing. So in a way, we were lucky that we got that rainfall event to show us where the concerns were. Again, a lot of them overlapped with some of the other input, but we had a firsthand account of a lot of that right at the beginning of our study.
Can you share what the different colors are on that? Were there orange dots or were there green dots?
Yeah. So the different dots related to the type of drainage concern that people represented. We asked them to categorize those. So the red would be a roadway. They said, "Look, I see street flooding here. I've observed it. It's a problem." The green is erosion, and the orange dot was what we call property. So it's their property, and adjacent property could be a storm base and a property issue.
Sorry, I'm wrong.
No, you're fine. Yeah, by all means, ask any questions. So once we gathered the data, we then went into the analysis, and I'm going to show you a couple of examples of two areas, two types of projects that we saw, a simple one and a complex one. But as Rich mentioned, we not only looked at that input from the citizens, but we looked at what are areas draining into the city that could pose potential risk or influence on the city's drainage system. And so this graphic represents that work that shows all the areas around the borders of the city that drains into it, as Rich said, comes from St. Charles, comes from Geneva, comes from unincorporated Kane. Some of these are small areas, so we cataloged them in the report. We ranked them as to what we thought were the most significant. There wasn't anything of overriding concern. There was one that we did incorporate into our capital planning to keep an eye on and to monitor, and I'll touch on that a little bit later. So in the analysis, we did look at this in addition to the resident input. I'm going to talk about two types of projects and give you a sense of what, how we prepared the report and the format of the study areas, the 25 study areas that I referred to. So each of the study areas, and this one is all characterized as was a relatively simple concern and simple project that was raised. It's rear yard ponding, poor drainage, longstanding ponding, that created a maintenance concern. Several residents reported this concern. They cited mosquitoes and other health concerns related to the standing water in addition to maintenance. And so for this relatively simple project, there's a variety of solutions that we could look at. What we did for each one of these was we created a narrative that identified the issue of the concern. We defined what level of analysis we performed. And for a simple ones like this, we didn't go into a lot of detail on the analysis. It wasn't necessary. If there were alternatives, we identified those. So for example, if we're going to convey the water in a pipe or in a ditch, we would talk about those alternatives. And each of them had a map or an exhibit similar to this. Again, this one's relatively small in terms of its scale and scope. Each of the map includes some GIS information from the city, storm sewer system, contour information, tributary area to the drainage concern, schematic layout of the solution. In this case, it's a storm sewer located right here, connecting to existing. And then finally, a cost estimate. So each one of these has a cost estimate associated with them. And again, this one was a relatively simple one. There were a number of them that were relatively easily resolved, and so those were identified in the report. I'm going to switch over to one that's a little more complicated and a little more widespread. And this one is-
It's always encouraging when the two gentlemen behind you guffaw.
If I'm getting heckled from them.
Do you want me to clear the room? Except for you, of course.
So this is what we call the Geneva High School area, and it's obviously probably most recognizable by Burgers Field up along Gray Street there. And it's bounded, the boundary of the study area that we define is the yellow boundary in the map here. And there are several areas like this where we had concerns from residents that were similar in nature, that were proximate to each other. So when that occurred, where we saw there were similar concerns in nature, we looked to see, is there a solution that really kind of takes care of all of it? In this area, there, you know, what we found was it really was a lack of drainage infrastructure that we see in some other parts of the city, you know, especially what I call modern drainage infrastructure. So a lot of the concerns we saw are related to the lack of that type of drainage infrastructure. What we developed was a plan that was basically built on what's there and build it out to solve some of those drainage concerns. Because this was so pervasive throughout the area, we decided to make this one study area. From a cost perspective, this was a very expensive project to undertake. In the case where we saw that it was a large project, in either a large geographic area or from a cost standpoint, we looked at then a phasing approach. So I'll show that in the capital planning. So for example, I'll, again, using this as just as one example, what we said is that really if we built out the infrastructure in this area, in the yellow boundary, over a 10-year period, we would still accomplish what we want in the end. And we'd be allowed to do it. Our initial thoughts are do that in conjunction with the road program. So as you go in and rebuild a roadway, you build the storm sewer, and the two are related. They serve each other, really. And so that, to some extent, the road program will drive the drainage infrastructure, and I like to think that the drainage infrastructure might also drive some of the road program within this boundary. And again, as Rich said, what this really is, what we're hoping this to do is create a roadmap for the staff, so when they prepare those programs, they can think about those two elements together. So you're not going to go in and build all this infrastructure in one year. It's going to be done over time, and in time, we'll solve the problems. There were several study areas that were larger in nature that we took the similar approach to what we did here in the Geneva High School area. So again, this is the same map of those 25 areas. Once we performed the study in all those areas, then it was time to roll them together into a capital plan that would allow the staff to program them and budget them. And I'm going to walk through, this is, I know this is going to be a little bit hard to read, but I'm not going to refer to any specific data on this. I want to talk about how it's organized and how this is put together. There's two main tables, I will, or spreadsheets, they are really, with the capital plan. This first one is a summary that gives a description of it. So each of the study areas has a number that corresponds to the map. Each of the drainage areas received a name. Typically, it was the name of the roadway or the neighborhood that we're working in. There was a problem statement. We reiterated, what is the problem that we're trying to solve? Make sure we're on target with that. There is a brief summary of the description. Again, each of the study areas has detail on that, what's involved, the alternatives. This is just a summary that someone could look at and digest and easily compare several projects together. There was a total cost for the project, both soft costs and construction costs. And then a brief summary of whether it's a one-year project, a multi-year project, or perhaps even in the Geneva High School, a 10-year project. So a view as to what that project entailed from a timing perspective. We added at the end three more columns that are more qualitative in nature. We looked at a couple of different metrics, and again, as Rich said, this is a snapshot. It's meant to be a guide. So a couple of things we thought were important were land rights. Do you need easement? Is it something you need permission to go and do, or can you do it on your own? So we thought land rights is, you know, anybody involved in building public infrastructure, you know that's an important element, right? So we thought we'd identify that as an item for someone to think about when they're looking at the projects. We also looked at the parcels benefited, and then a cost per parcel benefited. And again, this wasn't, shouldn't be the deciding factor. We thought these were elements that would be interesting for someone to look at if you're trying to fit a project in, to be able to judge it back and forth. And so that, there were all 25 projects. This is the second page of that, basically the same format. The second table is then taking those projects and putting them into a five-year, I am going to blow this up a little bit so we can maybe read it better. So put them into a five-year plan and program. So what we basically did then was take those projects and programmed them over a five-year period. Rich had asked us to do that over a 10-year timeframe, and we thought beyond five years, it's really just too hard to guess what might happen, but at least in a five-year period, we could begin to plan that out. So we created a five-year plan with a B-list, which is the last five years of a 10-year program. And so this planning or program, again, has some similar elements. Oh, I guess I'll use my cursor. So it has a number, the drainage area, name, the description, again, duration, total costs, and then we broke out design and construction costs. And so for some of the projects, especially the more complex ones, the thought is you might design in one fiscal year and build it in the next. You may need a permit. You may need a permit from KDOT. You may need easements. Those don't happen overnight. And so for those projects, the simpler ones, we tried to program into one year. The ones that are more complex, we suggested you could break up the design and the construction into two years. We received input from city staff and then put them into, oh, there go my arrows now. Okay. So I'm going to go through those. So we put them into the five-year program, as I mentioned before, with a B-list. The second page of the table is here. Although it's hard to read, the bottom line, the overall program is about $16.8 million. And that's in today's dollars. We didn't project those out in the future. We just tried to keep it simple for now into today's dollars. Over the first five years, we show an expenditure of $8.3 million with 8.5 on the B-list. And again, this is intended to be a sample. This was us putting it together. No input from you all in terms of the council, but this is what it could look like if you were to address all those projects we identified within a 10-year period. Question?
Got it.
And your construction estimate, did you use the current inflated construction numbers? Do you anticipate in the next five to 10 years that the numbers, the costs for materials, et cetera, will remain where they are today?
So right now, the values that you see, so there's two answers to that question. I hate to do this. There's two answers to the question. Right now, with the engineering costs based on today's dollars, the financial projections, which is the next slide, those dollars were inflated. Were they inflated at the current, what we're saying, construction rates? I'd have to double-check that. They were inflated, though. There was inflation on the financial projections. But these dollars you see here were not. Did it answer your question? Okay.
Yeah, and I guess, and just the second part of that was, do you anticipate that the existing inflated prices will stick around?
That's a loaded question.
Hold on, let's make sure we record this.
I don't know. You know, that's, I'm going to tell you, I just don't know what they're going to do. I think it's really just so hard to predict with supply chain. You know, we've seen lumber prices go up and come back down, right? So I think it's really hard to predict what those prices are. Things like asphalt, same thing. They're so dependent on the price of oil, it's really hard to predict what could happen. And of course, there's so many things that could influence that. A fire in a refinery in Texas, and, you know, suddenly we have issues with that. So, but we did, there was an inflationary rate put on the financial projections.
Okay. Thank you.
So the next slide, then, once we come up with a pretty big number and say, here is what it would take to address all those 25 projects on the map within a 10-year period, if you were to try and accomplish that, what would a financial projection look like? We had a consultant, NewGen, who does a number of rate studies and stormwater utilities in northeast Illinois assist us with this effort. So this effort was NewGen preparing these, also working with city staff, I should add. And I'm going to focus a little bit right now on the table in upper left and the elements that they looked at. They looked at operating, which is really full-time equivalence, labor and materials for operating the drainage system. The cash funded capital projects are what we had identified in the capital plan. The debt service, given the dollar values that we're talking, there was assumed debt service in what NewGen assumed. Again, in these financial forecasts, they had to make some assumptions for the model. They assumed that $10 million out of that would be debt funded over a period of years. There was an assumption made that the general fund would initiate the funding of the capital program, and that's the $550,000 in the first year that we see, and that there would be repayment of that to the general fund over time, and then buildup of a reserve for the fund, both based on operating policy and as well as debt service policy. And that's the table below the net revenue requirement table. Kind of lost my cursor here. There we go. So ultimately, this ends up being the net revenue to begin to fund that project, the full capital program over the 10-year period. From that, then, there are a variety of ways to fund the program. We looked at, if you were to fund that net revenue requirement, how you might do it, and the table at the bottom is one example of how that could be done in three different ways. One is per water account, based on the water count. One is per parcel, and then the last one is a tax rate per assessed valuation. None of these are recommendations that are coming to you, say, this is what you should do or how you should do it. These are really to give you a sense of the order of magnitude. If you were to say, this is our capital plan, and the assumptions were made in this manner is an example of how it could be done. And again, is intended to be example as to how that might occur. So again, kind of back to the same slide with, here's the projects we see throughout the city that we had identified, how to address those concerns, and how to fund the concerns. And my last slide, no drainage presentation would be complete without a discussion on rainfall data. So one of- So, one of the observations we made through the study, and in talking with staff, we thought we'd point out, is really what's incurred with the engineering industry and design over the years. And what I'm showing you here in the chart, both the chart, the tabular chart with numbers, as well as the bar chart, the blue is Technical Paper 40, which is what engineers would have used to design storm sewer and stormwater basins up until about 1990, '91. In that period, what's known as Bullet in '70, the State Water Survey published Bullet in '70, which was more accurate rainfall data, it was more data to begin with, and it's what engineers used from about 1991 until about two years ago. And two years ago, at about the same time we started the study, they published Bullet in '75. And as you can see, the rainfall data that we're using to design infrastructure is ever And one, just as a percentage, just to give you a sense, between Bullet in '70 and '75, so not all the way back to the late '80s, but from, just within the last three years, the 100-year event increased 13 percent, the rainfall depth, from 7.58 to 8.57. So, that's what engineers are using now. Three years ago, they would have been using 7.58. Now, that doesn't, I'm not here to suggest that that explains, you know, the issues or problems, but it is certainly a factor as to why, in some areas, we may be seeing some issues. And lastly, there's a lot of discussion in the media, for sure, about climate change and community resilience, and I can't speak to climate change, I don't know much about it. But in terms of community resilience, I think one of the things that this study can do, and I hope it does, I sincerely hope it does, it prepares you for the unexpected, whether it be climate change or something else. We have better data that shows it's increasing. As Rich said, I think the goal is to improve your decision-making by giving you the information. We're hoping to improve city staff's ability to plan and budget for the drainage infrastructure. So, the rainfall, change in rainfall data is one of the elements that's changing on us. Hopefully, this allows the city to better plan and manage those unforeseen changes in the future. With that, I conclude my presentation. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Mr. Bruno will kick things off in the dance.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things pointed out, and I'm not looking to get into the weeds, jumped out at me is Randall Square, if I saw the very blurry chart.
Randall Square was the largest dollar, bigger than the high school area? Did I read that correctly?
It was. So, Randall Square, there were a couple projects, I guess it's fair to say, it surprised us a little bit to see them, you know, in that area. Randall Square was the largest dollar amount primarily because, in that area, we were looking to provide some additional stormwater storage, which meant land acquisition. And the land acquisition for those improvements really drove the price of that project up. Also, and to somewhat extent related to that rainfall data, what we'd ask city staff is, you know, what should we be designing, what should we be planning for? And the answer was, we'll plan for the rainfall data we have now, 100-year event, level of protection, rainfall data now. So, that's what we did, we provided for that.
Okay, presumably, looking through all this, looking at it holistically, say we address the high school area. If we evacuate lots more water more quickly from that area, we've taken into account downstream choke points that would need to be addressed to handle that effluent?
Yeah. So, the evaluation we did, in many cases, and I think both the high school and Randall Square in the same manner, the water's getting there eventually anyway, so we're not changing the volume of water. There is some storage in some of the rear yards and so forth, but not a significant amount. I will also add that the studies we did, there are 25 different study areas, if we were to go into the Randall Square area, or Miller Road is another area, for example, we're to look at that, there's further analysis that needs to be done to make sure that concern is not missed and is addressed.
Okay. And just an accounting thing, obviously, I wouldn't scratch it, but where are reserves in the water department?
This is stormwater, which is general fund.
That's general fund, okay. Thank you. That's it, thanks.
Ms. Mayor, then, Mr. Kosarog.
I was hoping you could go back to the, I have a few questions. I was hoping you could go to the map with the different drainage basins.
At the very beginning?
Yeah.
Okay. That one.
Yeah, so, I understand how all the water flows to the river, but can you, can you point to where, is it Mill Creek that goes through there, or what is the creek that makes the drainage to the river from the brown area?
So, this area actually drains west, so everything, so this line right here, everything, we'll call it a ridge line, so everything along, oh, you can't see, you can't see that, that's on, I can see it, you can't.
Oh, there it is.
That's okay, I apologize for that. It was working on my screen, not on yours.
It's a little tricky on that one.
Right here, this line here is a ridge line.
Okay.
So, everything to the east of this line drains to the river, everything to the west of that line drains over to Mill Creek, which is right, I believe, over in this area here.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, I'm surprised how close it goes to the river, though. How does it carry on along 31 there? So, Route 31 is right where you're at?
Okay. So...
What happens to the south of that, is what I'm curious about?
South of this?
Just seems really unlikely that that's draining, I don't know, I thought there was a hill there.
Well, I think, so, it, you know, I think, so a couple things are happening here, I guess, to point out. So, this here is the abandoned rail spur that goes behind Western Avenue School and comes down and hits the Fabian Forest Preserve. So, one of the things we did notice is that, that abandoned spur is, oftentimes, the railroad beds are built up, they can act to divert water. And the other thing to bear in mind is Eagle Brook, which is right here, drains into Brayburn Marsh, which goes to Mill Creek. So, I think what's deceiving here is that, here we go, is that this area drains over to Brayburn Marsh, and then over to Mill Creek.
Okay.
So, although, you're right, it looks like it's close to the river, it's also very close to the marsh, and I'm going to guess for a minute that the rail spur actually acts as a dam, maybe naturally it didn't flow that way, the railroad built a spur and it diverted the water years ago, of course.
Now, I know of some areas where there's drainage problems in Eagle Brook, but it's on Park District land. I was wondering, and this might be a question for you, Stephanie, if it's on Park District land, do we do anything with that, or is that for the Park District to settle up?
I guess that's an, it depends, because I would think, anything that affects our stormwater overall, we would certainly work with them to make those improvements, much like a private resident.
You know, I will say this, the only thing I can think of is in Sunset Park, just south of the railroad, there was an area drainage concern in that area that was expressed. So, I think if the Park District had any concerns, we would have heard from them, or a resident that might have, you know, adjacent to it.
It's the Eagle Brook baseball field, has a horrible swamp on the north side of it when it rains heavy, so.
Off of Bent Tree is what you're referring to.
Yeah, off of Bent Tree, yeah. You have to wade through, squishy.
That's character building.
Yes, it's mud building, for moms to clean up, moms and dads to clean up in the laundry. The next plan that you had up, there was a bunch of different, I think it was the high school area, I wanted to understand a little bit better. So, I mean, I'm familiar with the streets around the high school, and they really don't have drainage system right now. Is this basically installing a full storm system in that whole region, or is there actually existing storm in the area?
So, now that, let me get my cursor over there, I can, that'll be, so, what you see on this map, there is some existing storm sewer system. You're right, there's no curb and gutter, and within the streets, there is some storm sewer. So, the orange, the orange that you see here is the existing, no, I take that back. There is some existing storm sewer system in here, it's hard to see with this map, given the resolution. The orange...
The bright green is existing?
The bright green is the major trunk line that runs through the, so there's a 60-inch pipe that goes to elliptical that runs through. There is smaller, it's actually really hard to see, but, right, see this purple, this arrow line? That's some existing here, this is existing storm sewer here. The orange and the magenta are the two lines that we're proposing to add, to build out, build on to the existing, to tie into that main trunk line or other storm sewer. So, the existing is this purple, it gets a little bit washed out with the presentation. So, there is some existing, for sure, but it's not developed to the same point that you might see in a subdivision that's built today.
And does your estimate include new curb and gutter for that area, or it's just to accommodate drainage area basins into the storm sewer?
It did not include curb and gutter. We did consider that for the areas, one level of improvement, but decided not to include it.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
From a couple reasons. One, there's a cost to it. Secondly, not all residents would be in favor of it. And thirdly, as a best management practice, from a water quality perspective, the drainage swales help filter the water. So, those are the reasons we didn't include it. That's not to say that, you know, if a project proceeded, that could be included, but we did not include it.
Were a lot of the complaints in that area about overflow in the drainage swales?
There were some that were the drainage swell, yes. There were some rear yard complaints in that area. If you have a sump pump, many people don't have anywhere to discharge their sump pumps, except to the backyard, always go to the low spot, and some poor person or two gets that in their rear yard. So, we saw that in a number of locations throughout this area.
Are there other areas of the city that don't have curb and gutter and storm sewer structure, infrastructure similar to this?
Yes.
Can you highlight on the plan, kind of the regions?
Sure. You know, I would say...
I mean, I know where some of them are.
Well, yeah, I know, I know on the east side, you know, so my mind goes to the east side. We had identified a number, let me, so, you know, a couple of the projects over here, Kansas Street, for example, would have been one of those areas where there's not curb and gutter throughout the entire neighborhood. There might be on some streets, but, you know, there's areas where there's not, there's ditches and so forth. We did receive some concerns, and I, there might be some even north of 38 on the east side as well. You know, there's an area up along Elm and up in that area where there's not curb and gutter, where it occurs to. Some of those areas, you know, if there's enough grade, I think what happens, if there's enough grade, those ditches flow a lot better, and we just don't see the concerns and complaints. Where it's very flat is where, again, the high school is one of the areas where we just, it seems to be more problematic. But there are other areas of the city that have a similar nature.
Can you describe, just at a high level, the problems in Randall Square, so that we can get an idea of what's going on there?
Sure. I will, you know, so...
I'd like a motion to go beyond 10 o'clock right now.
Yeah, I love to talk about drainage, I mean, you know, how long do you have?
We won't get to 8 o'clock, I promise.
With your question.
I'm trying to make sure I'm really careful of not saying anything I shouldn't. I, you know, no, here's what I think...
But Greg, it is fair to say that you and your team, certainly Brian and Rich, are not surprised about the issues in Randall Square by any means.
No.
Yeah, so, it's not a surprise to anybody that these exist.
The issue, yeah, the issues in Randall Square were, have been known for a long time. I saw it personally on that rainfall event, you know, I saw what was happening. You know, basically, if I could get my cursor over on the, here we go. So, basically, what's happening is, there's a large area to the north, Delnor Campus, Fisher Farms area, all drains south across the railroad, through Sterling Manor, where's my, where's my, so everything north of railroad drains south.
It goes under the railroad? It goes under the railroad, through...
Through culverts.
Through culverts, okay.
Right. Into Sterling Manor, and then makes its way into Randall Square and Randall Square Commercial Basin, which fills up and overtops. You know, our assessment would say, the outlet to Randall Square was severely undersized, based on the tributary area. If you look at, you look at what the area is coming through there, and you look at that outlet going under Randall Road, it's too small, bottom line. And if you don't believe me, go out there someday, you'll see it. I mean, everyone sees it, right? So, I think, I think, but that's not the whole story. I think the other thing that's happening in Randall Square is, Sterling Manor was designed at a time when the rainfall data was TP-40. So, you know, it's not any one thing. You know, what we see happening in Randall Square Commercial is the outlet. The basin's filling up and overtopping, you know, could be at least a good part, just the fact they had different rainfall data, and now it's coming through those culverts, and it's doing what it should be doing. So, our solution there, our solution there was complicated, because, you know, it's actually interesting, because your question about, you know, we're, now we're letting more water go through, what's the impact downstream, was a serious concern of ours, and this one that we think should be studied, is increase the flow, you know, put in bigger pipes, convey it, get it out of there with a combination of storage, because just increasing flow alone could have impacts downstream. So, we included the idea that we would need some additional storage, which drove us into acquiring property, which got to be very expensive for that. So, did that answer your question?
Yes, I think it did. I think I didn't understand that all of that other area was flowing into there, and it seems...
And it's a series of improvements, really, from the basins directly south of the railroad, really, all the way through to Randall Road. So, that's what that project included.
So, when you say the commercial basin, you mean the one that's just east of the fire station?
Yes.
That's the one?
Yes.
That's undersized, or it overtops, but...
The outlet is undersized, yeah. You know, I think, I think that we would say, based on today's rainfall data, it's undersized. Everything out there was quote-unquote undersized, but it's overtopping primarily because the outlet's too small. So, one of the solutions was to put in concrete box culverts, to convey that water underneath Randall Road to the other side.
But where does it go then?
We're comfortable with it at this point in time, based on further study, but to the point of, because the water's getting there anyway. Right now, it fills up and goes over, and it gets there anyway. So, we're saying, put it in a box underneath, so it doesn't impact the commercial businesses there.
Got it, thank you.
Mr. Kosarog, Mr. Swanson?
Mr. Kosarog, Mr. Swanson?
Thanks, Mayor. I guess, uh, um, just a kind of a general question. It seemed like a lot of this was based on the resident concerns, the open house we did and things like that. But more, I mean, there was also stuff done, just with your expertise, your team's expertise and our expertise and things like that. So, these, I guess I just got a little confused with, these were the main areas that people complained about? Versus incorporating that to a level of expertise that, that we can know about? Does that make sense? I mean, obviously, if people have a flooding backyard, we get it, we need to do something about it. But how it all flows together, how it flows downstream, I mean, that all becomes very complicated, which is why we need to hire consultants about it. So, I guess I didn't get a feel for what level of expertise went into the process, too. I, I felt like it was more based on, on that open house and the questionnaire online.
Well, it was based on, it was based on that, it was based on, we received input from, uh, the city staff where the drainage problems were. And again, we had firsthand accounts ourselves from the rainfall event, um, as to where the concerns were. You're right, I mean, it's, you know, people, there were, I will say this, there were some things that also don't show up on the map. So, we had, um, somebody who has a detention basin in their backyard, and they said, "Look, my backyard floods." And it's a detention basin, so it's, it was doing what it's supposed to do. That didn't show up here. We had some concerns with people along the Fox River that are in the flood plain, they're concerned about the flood plain. We're not going to modify the flood elevation of the Fox River. That didn't show up. So, just because we, we, we heard most concerns, and then we looked at them and said, "Is this a valid concern?"
Okay.
Is this realistic, is there something, um, that we should do about it? But it was largely driven, you know, we, we can only know what we can see and then drive from that, um, what the solutions are. And again, some of them were, were complicated, the Miller Road, Randall Square, Geneva High School and Maple Sherman, those four, those color shaded areas were probably the more complicated ones in terms of what do we do? How do we solve those, those issues? Where, I will say, your question about expertise, that's where it probably got applied more significantly.
Okay. I, I guess I was surprised in a way that Eagle Brook itself, not as the golf course, but as the area, wasn't even, isn't even identified on that map with a number. But, I mean, I, I know from having, living there, that there is flooding all over the place. And I know staff is aware of that. So, um, I guess I'm, I, I thought, you know, I, I could be wrong, I'm no expert, but I thought a lot of water runs underneath the golf course, coming from the west side of Randall Road to the wetlands, to that detention basin in Batavia, right across from Fabian. And frankly, I don't know where it goes from there. But is there, there's just, there was no issues, is that because we, nobody brought it up? Or because there, based on the evaluation, there isn't any problems there?
Well, a lot of the evaluation was based on what we heard, and if it was brought up by either staff or residents.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't know, to me, that's a little concerning, because, uh, that is where those wetlands are, where a lot of that stuff comes to. And I, I just thought that was going to be taken into consideration somehow there, because, um, again, we see flooding, not flooding like, um, backyards, but flooding like something underground isn't right. And I understand there's been cases where, um, oh, uh, and this is kind of one of my questions, is have we, have we taken any repairs and things into account? Because I know there's cracked culverts, uh, throughout Eagle Brook. I know, uh, some anecdotal stories about, um, drainage pipes, uh, never being jet sprayed, and so nasty stuff coming out of those when a resident complained enough. And, you know, I, I don't know, I guess I'm just a little confused with, I, kind of how it all works together down, down the line.
Yep.
So, I'm going to interject on this one. Uh, the Eagle Brook subdivision, uh, which is SSA eleven, uh, has had some significant drainage issues in the past, to where with the marshland, and I don't want to call it a marshland, it's a wetland, has surcharged above and beyond the property lines. Uh, over the last eight years, as Hampton Lindsay-Renwick, who's been our consultant out there and our maintenance contractor, has done an incredible job in reestablishing the drainage channels and keeping those drainage channels open. When we start seeing drainage issues in there, um, they have been attributed to, uh, improper disposal of yard, yard waste. That's probably the most polite way I can say that. There's also been muskrats, which get moved on a semi-annual basis. And also, we have, uh, changed over about six years ago from burning that site to mowing it with the swamp machine now. So, a lot of that work has gone far to, uh, establishing the main drainage channel. The structures that you're referring to, uh, are predominantly on the east side of Eagle Brook, and they're backed up in Kime, in that area, Kime Circle. That information was, uh, brought forth to us by the golf course. And we've been working with that, that golf course management company now, uh, for about the last fifteen months, slowly chiseling those out. Now, that gets into a maintenance funding budget, uh, which is outside the capital budget. So, what you're seeing here tonight is a capital improvement budget.
Okay.
Maintenance becomes a different issue, and that has been an ongoing, uh, project that we have been chasing over the last probably five to eight years, where we currently budget about a quarter million dollars a year for maintenance throughout the city. And that is split up, that's just pure maintenance. Replacing storm structures, cleaning out catch basins, it's a combination of internal house forces and external forces. So, as that information is being brought forth, or we become aware of it, we have been attending to those issues. Regarding the culverts, so, inside the current budget is money that has been set aside through the SSA budget to make repairs to various structures and culverts throughout the Eagle Brook subdivision. It's been about a fifty thousand dollar project, and, uh, unfortunately, with demands on staff, we just simply haven't been able to get that into the process to get them repaired. There are not significant repairs, so they're not structural failures. We just completed another study internally, uh, for citywide culverts. But, uh, they are structures that do need to have some attention made to them. And again, we're working with the golf course on that, because some of those structures actually serve, while their drainage structures actually serve as underpasses for the golf course itself. And, uh, they're not too keen about us just showing up one day and throwing up some barricades and saying, uh, "Guess what, you can no longer, uh, cross the road, at least at this location." So, there, there's some, some collaboration there that we're working with also, and the current golf course management company has been ideal to work with. So, hopefully that has addressed some of those concerns, but those are maintenance issues, whereas the study you're seeing tonight is focused on capital, uh, significant improvements to the system.
So, I'm sorry to press you, Rich, but I'm just trying to picture, so, um, yeah, I had one resident call me today, I've had others mention in the past, um, about drainage issues, and where they say, "Oh, you guys just finished that study and you had a meeting on that." I would answer them that that's a maintenance issue, not what the study was intended to address.
Correct. And again, the majority of the issues that we see in the Eagle Brook subdivision are through fluctuations. When you're, the marshland and most of the properties in that backyard probably have an elevation difference of less than eighteen inches. It doesn't take much, if a structure gets compromised with reeds, uh, because someone's cut them down and encroached, and now the reeds have drifted into that area, or if there's been an illicit disposal of yard waste, or really anything that can impact that structure, uh, eighteen inches of freeboard does not give a lot of wiggle room, and that water can jump up fairly quickly. Plus the fact that there is an outfall structure off of Fabian, um, which is visible from, uh, Fabian Boulevard. And if that structure becomes compromised from muskrat lodge, it gets dislodged, and a bunch of wood gets wedged up against that, it can cause the water to back up, and then it's a maintenance issue. Again, we have to go out there and remove the obstruction.
Okay. I think that answers my question in that regard. Is that, is that, uh, wetlands down there on Fabian, the, the Braverman Wetlands that he was referring to?
The eastern portion is.
Eastern portion is.
Closer to western, is the Braverman Wetlands.
Okay. I was just curious if, as we think about funding for these projects, are there grants or anything available for these things? Have we looked into that at all, or is this purely out of our own funds?
This is step one, is identif- identifying what you have, so then you can start looking at what you can do. We did actually submit, um, I think it was the Miller Road project, we submitted, uh, through Durbin's office, but I don't believe it was one that was selected for future funding for Congressional earmark.
But we're trying.
But we constantly are, are looking for those things, but certainly to have this information provides us, when you have a grant, you have to have all of this work done to know what you're asking for.
Okay, great, I think that's all my questions for right now.
Mr. Swanson, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. In your five-year capital plan, the twenty-five areas, um, were kind of spread out, um, one this year, one the next year. Was, how was, how were they spread? Was that based on severity of the problem? Was it based on the road maintenance schedule, or was there some other consideration?
It was based on, uh, it was not based on the road maintenance program. So, we didn't have that information to base it on that. It was really based on taking the projects, um, and trying to spread them out throughout the year. We had some large capital projects that we felt, um, would be better placed, not in year one or year two, but in the later years. And then looking at what projects, um, could be accomplished, um, quickly in years one and two, some of the smaller ones, starting some of the design engineering and some of the larger ones.
Okay, so, so it would be fair to say that, uh, Rich, you would evaluate this too? And if there was a road that we're going to be working on in the near future, we would modify that five-year schedule? So, that five-year schedule is not set in stone, it was mainly to spread the cost ratably for the next five years?
Yes and no. Because we are, we are, now that we know where these projects are, we're trying to incorporate them in other projects. For example, the one on Oakwood, we've, we've been working with ComEd through, for drainage management for that one, because it's a long and tedious project, so we've already started that process and it's internal. There's another one on Route twenty-five, uh, near, uh, Jefferson, that, uh, we're looking to incorporate into the water main project for next spring. So, it's, it's, it's provided a framework, and it's a plan, but, uh, we're, we're trying to already implement that plan as we're moving forward. A combination of, let's hold off on this one because we know we're going to do this road, you know, in two years, or we want to get this done because we have the State Street project, which is going to really inconvenience a lot of our motoring public, so we want to get out of that area before that happens. So, it's, it's yes and no. But what we're trying to do, and we spent a significant amount of time reviewing that capital budget, was, um, recognizing the fact that we don't have a funding source, other than the general fund. So, we're in direct competition with the road program and with a lot of other viable projects. But at the same time, what can we start implementing now to start addressing some of these issues? The, the bigger projects, yeah, there's, some of these will probably still be going on, uh, long after, uh... Well, the, the program will probably have to, the study will probably have to be refreshed before we get through all these projects.
Okay.
Unless something changes at the state level.
Thank you. You, you mentioned the overall cost, and I guess that's the, my, my last question was, what, what, the number that I focused on was on the funding page, and it seemed to me the number was each meter roughly would have to pay eighteen fifty a month more to fund all the projects, and that would be starting relatively soon.
Well, that is, uh, an example that would be using a basis of a, um, yeah, Greg's going to sit down on this one now. This is, that would be on a basis of a stormwater utility. And, uh, we've looked at stormwater utilities in the past, and, uh, it gets to be a fairly complicated issue because we're a non-home rule community. So, there's, there's a very, there's a defined roadmap, but it's a very narrow roadmap for moving forward with that.
Requiring a referendum.
Or home rule adoption, or the state changing the statute to lower the threshold of the population to, to enact a stormwater utility.
Okay, I'll rephrase the question then, as opposed to the way we receive the funding, the, the answer then is, it's really a two hundred to two hundred twenty-five dollar a year cost per meter to fund this, irrespective of how we fund it.
Yeah, and I guess the way you have to look at that is that the, um, this is a citywide benefit.
Sure, sure.
So, um, I think that was one of the things that surprised me the most, was as we moved forward with this project. Uh, I was fully expecting that there was going to be one or two very well-defined areas of the city of Geneva, predominantly in the old part of town, the established mature part of town, that was going to have the drainage issues. And there was the surprising numbers of drainage issues, uh, really, uh, on the west side of town, which is, for all practical purposes, we consider to be new construction. I mean, it's less than thirty years old, it's new construction, in my parlance at least. And because it was based off of data that was, uh, significantly older, and because however you want to look at the climate, the numbers are changing, and they're changing because we're getting better data. And what we wanted to make sure is that we are providing an assessment using the best data we have, so we can plan for the future. And as a result of that, a lot of these community, a lot of these neighborhoods, uh, really west of the river, showed up as needing some of the most work, which was a significant surprise to staff as we did this review.
You anticipated my last question, and that was, are there any surprises in this study? From the fifth ward standpoint, all of those sites are kind of, we, we knew about them, and, and it is the west side. So, thank you for answering that, and that takes care of my questions, thank you.
Mr. Kilburg, sir?
Thank you. I had a question. We've heard a lot about the, the flooding issues off of Fargo, west of Randall. And, um, this might be a silly question, why don't we simply increase the depth of that detention area?
That, that is one, so that is one of the projects that we identified, is to, to make that basin deeper. That alone won't do it.
No, I understand that, but it would help alleviate some of the, the issues, uh, further upstream there.
And in fact, um, what we looked at is a pump evacuated basin, because there's an elevation, we can only go so deep as, as the outlet. But we even included a pump evacuated basin to get more volume. That was one of the considerations.
Are there any other detention areas around Geneva that, that might also be a consideration?
Not for that, not for that area, no.
I understand, not for that area, but I mean, other areas in the community, because I think those along East Side Drive service that area quite well, because of their depth.
Yeah, but the, and for that one, uh, that basin, we did look at, uh, digging a deeper basin with a pump.
No, you know, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's very shallow. It, it seems shallow, it, you know, as you drive by, you say, "Well, might they go deeper and hold more water?" Which I know isn't the, the only answer, solution.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a couple of things, you know, when looking at getting more volume, obvious, if, if you need it in a watershed, and so the green shaded area is where we're looking to get more volume, um, there's a couple of ways to do it. There are a couple of other basins upstream, we looked at dropping the outlet, lowering the outlet, which makes a deeper pond. Now, you know, is that going to be palatable to the people who live nearby? I don't know, but that's one way to get the volume. And we looked at that, which meant building more storm sewer, or raising the high water level, which really isn't practical in most cases. level, which really isn't practical in most cases.
Next question. We have some very dated, probably storm systems in the older parts of Geneva. How much data do we have on that and what's the structural condition? Have we done any, I mean, do we have a lot of good inspection data? And, I mean, some of those are probably date back to the turn of the century. I mean, I'm talking about 1900 or older maybe. They're all concrete or?
Yeah, good luck, Rich, answer the, on the condition of the.
They're concrete?
It's a combination of concrete and brick and flagstone.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, in two weeks, we have a meeting with IDOT to focus in on the Route 31 culvert at Fargo and Fabian Woods. That structure was actually a WPA project from the 1930s.
33.
Yeah. And it's, it's not ours, it's the state's. But at least we were able to convince the state to come on, take a look, and they looked at it and went, hey, we need to do something about this one. So, we're, we're going to start working on that one. And if we're really smart and we're really lucky, we'll be able to do that work when they close down 31 for the UP project.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just wondering if some of those existing structures need to also be addressed? Some of those really dated structures and if they're in a deteriorated state, if they cave in, what does that do with moving storm water? And have we prioritized any of those that we've all, that are, that are showing up there that we may not see on your maps?
So, there, there have been previous studies specific to the downtown, for example, where interceptors have been installed on the north side of Route 38. Not on 38, but in the.
What's an interceptor?
It, it's basically a larger storm sewer, 24-inch pipe, that's catching smaller flows or flows from smaller outdated pipes and bringing that down to, down through the drainage system. Those, that's how the, the approach has been in the past. It was like, there's a problem in this neighborhood, let's look at this neighborhood and let's figure it out for this neighborhood. That's why we took this approach of looking at the entire city. And we've, and this is before my time, so I'm, I'm not going to take any credit for it, but it's within Alton Roscoe's time because he's talked to me about it, to address drainage issues predominantly in the downtown area. So, that has worked. We, as our maintenance program now, in addition to lining the sanitary sewers to make them more watertight, we are now lining the set, the storm sewer system also. So, within that $250,000 maintenance budget, that includes a certain portion of the storm sewers that get lined. Within the capital budget, there's also a line item there for improvements. So, not just maintenance, but those are true capital projects. For example, we just had a storm sewer and the current infrastructure program was just replaced. We just installed, we just installed storm sewer improvements over on James Street to alleviate some localized flooding there. We will be doing a storm sewer replacement on Center Street between Anderson and, forgetting, Edison, maybe? So, yeah, we've been doing maintenance as well as improvements within our, our road programs.
It's sort of.
Oh, yeah, yes, over in Brita Alley, or the alley between Brita and Manchester. We did do some under drains and that's alleviated a lot of groundwater. Apparently, the groundwater level is quite high over there and so that, that's helping out quite a bit already.
The only reason I ask that question is if we do this over the next 10 years and we improve drainage in these neighborhoods, like for instance, west of the high school, and we increase water flow through our existing networks, and will that accelerate the deterioration of those older structures if we're moving more water through them? I mean, I'm just saying, I hope that we're taking a good hard look at those. And I would assume that those are, those, those main arteries. And some of these older structures are main arteries, I'm saying. The larger ones that handle, is it, that collects the tributaries? You know, I, I'd hope that, and again, I don't want to drag this out, but I'm just saying, I hope that we do a good thorough examination of those and that we don't, you know, we fix everything, we create all these additional tributaries, and then our, our main channel to the river breaks down on us, or all of a sudden we come back at the end of 10 years and we say, nah, we got to go after these now.
Well, the, our internal goal for the underground maintenance crew is 15% of the sanitary and 15% of the storm conveyance system is inspected through the underground camera system on an annual basis. And then we use that data to plan the next year's budget. So, it's a constant battle. Everything atrophies as soon as it goes into the ground. But we do have the unpleasant surprises. It was two years ago when the culvert on South Street was in danger of collapsing and we had to do an emergency shutdown. Nobody saw that coming. But as a result of that, then we looked at every culvert and structure underneath the roadway within the city of Geneva, or significant size, I shouldn't say everyone, but basically everything over about 36 inches. And now we're developing a maintenance program based off of that and a capital projects budget that you'll be seeing in about four months-ish, give or take. So, there, there's, there's maintenance, there's, that's why you have a public works department. That's why we're here, is to, we're, we're trying to shift from being a reactive department to a proactive department. And that has taken some time. It has taken a significant reinvestment by the community to give us those maintenance budgets and even a reallocation of priorities in some instances. But we are being much more aggressive with replacing those.
What would be our response to, if in fact, at some point in time, we need to, to ask the residents for more money? What's the justification for that if in fact, people that live in some of these neighborhoods say, well, yeah, we've lived here for 35, 40 years and we, we understand that when we get a heavy rainfall, we're going to have standing water. You know, what's the urgency to do this now because, you know, water evaporates and it disappears over time? And, and we can live with that. So, what, what would be a good explanation to, to residents that, that would pose that question? Because I'm sure at some point in time down the road, that question could easily surface.
Stormwater runoff is considered to be a pollutant under the federal guidance. As a pollutant, before its discharge to the waterway of the United States, which the Fox River is and which all creeks are, it has to undergo some sort of a treatment program. That is called the National Pollutant Discharge and Erosion Sedimentation Elimination System. We love our acronyms. But at the end of the day, there is a growing concern, and it is a strategic plan of the city, to be more proactive and protective of the natural areas and the Fox River watership. And so, that's the, that's the primary reason why we're doing this. We have ponding water issues, we have standing water issues. Those can create mosquito breeding habitats. They can also during uncontrolled runoffs, create sediment discharge or sediment blooming of the Fox River and discharge organics. So, that's your answer, is that we're doing this because we want to be proactive and we want to be good stewards of the environment. Irregardless of what your beliefs are about everything else, at the end of the day, this community is lucky, blessed, however you want to say, because we have the Fox River in our downtown. And that has been identified by you all as a major draw and tourist attraction by the city. So, what are we going to do to make sure that it stays healthy and a place that people want to go to? And we do that by being better stewards of our drainage system.
And we could all do a better job too if we would manage, better manage the insecticides and herbicides that we use on our lawns and if people wouldn't throw their dog waste down the storm sewer. That would reduce phosphorus levels in the Fox, which we're doing a better job with, a much better job. I mean, the Fox River is much improved over what it was 10 or 15 years ago or 20 years ago for sure. So, anyhow.
The other, the other aspect, the other benefit to that standing water is where that water usually ends up is in the sanitary sewer system, right? And Rich, I know they, they deal with the INI issue all the time. And so, the person who says, well, just let the water stand there. In a heavy rainfall, that may be in someone's basement. You know, that ends up in someone's basement. So, I think, you know, there are serious concerns with that, that, that solving the surface drainage issue can help other a- aspects as well.
Don't get me wrong. I, I, I agree with the project and I'm just posing some, some questions. And I think if people are watching this evening, those are things that maybe we can prevent a few of those questions down the road. But it all, it all makes sense. It's something that we need to undertake and I'm sure that Public Works is doing a good job with, with preparing us for this undertaking. So, thank you.
Mr. Bruno for a second. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Marks, then Mr. Bruno.
A couple of questions I probably know the answer to, but I just want to check. The number has no sequence to importance, correct? One, two, three, four? It's just how you did it. We see, we've talked about probably the four colors, but then we have that prairie green preserve sitting out there that has a color of its own, which as a layman into this, I can't understand why something open and vast like that has drainage issues, but evidently we do have some out there also.
There is. In that situation, the tenant farmer out there was not able to farm the.
Uh, got it.
The land. I mean, that was issue. Again, you know, we didn't, we didn't.
Want priority, yeah.
We just said, okay, we presented with the issue, you know.
Got it.
Didn't value judge that.
Okay. I've got. Probably more of a question for Stephanie, actually. When we look at the Randall Square issue, you had mentioned that it's coming from, you know, a few other subdivisions up, upcoming, coming down into that. Those subdivisions all have SSAs. Could they be increased to help solve that issue? The, the funding for those that, or can't you use money from one SSA to, because that issue is coming.
As long as they benefit from whatever the expenditure is. So, you would have to show that nexus or that correlation that they're, they're deriving a benefit.
Would, would this study help show that there is a benefitter? I'm not sure who gets to answer that question. Because I mean, you, you said, you know, it's, some of that issue is really coming from some of those upstream subdivisions and that part of town mostly has SSAs in place. Rich, I guess I put you on the spot. Sorry.
When we did the study, it was our intent to really not spend a lot of time studying SSAs.
Okay.
Because they have their own funding mechanism. It may take a while to build up the reserve to make those repairs. But in every capital budget, going back before my time, there's, there have been smaller capital projects within the SSAs to replace structures, wing walls, flare den sections, structures within the basin. With the Randall Square basin, I don't want to call it a watershed because that would be inaccurate. The, the magnitude of the improvements to the area is in excess of what the SSA can reasonably accommodate. Even if you, the SSAs are limited through ordinance, how much you can assess on an annual basis. So, even if we black box that SSA and pegged it to the absolute maximum, probably safe to say that Brian David's children would be, finally have enough money.
That's why I asked if the ones up above could also help fund that.
Yeah. So, it's not just that too. It's just, it's, it's, I've, I've worked in Geneva for eight years.
Mm-hmm.
I've worked in the Fox Valley region since 99. And I've driven up and down Randall Road like you all, probably more times than any of us could even contemplate. I have seen that parking lot flow overland after a significant rainfall and thought nothing of it. And because it's always happened that way.
Right. I know that.
When I started here as your public works director, staff assumed that that was the designed overflow route because every detention pond has a designated overflow route. And we assumed that that is how it worked. It just flowed across Merchant Drive in front of Lens Crafters and then made its way to the ditch on Randall Road and that's the way it was designed. And hey, look, it's working because that's how it's always been. So, we did this study. And then we looked at it and went, that's not how it's supposed to be going. It's still an overflow route, but it was, I think it was probably one of the biggest shocks was looking at the size of the infrastructure through there. And.
Rich, before you continue, that infrastructure was built under TP-40.
Correct.
Not Bulletin 70 or 75.
Right.
So, yeah.
So, at the time it met the standard.
Yeah, it's like.
It doesn't meet the standard now.
Right, right.
So, the, the, the cost, it's, it's a multifaceted approach. It's trying to acquire land where there's land available.
Exactly.
Because we don't want to buy people out of their, you know, we don't even want to say that this, the.
No, don't say the word.
Nope, 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 nope.
So, there's very limited land that's available. And because it's very limited, it's a very expensive land. There are detention facilities that can be modified. There's new construction that's been built under the modern standard, which is actually alleviating some of the outfall because it's detaining more water on the projects that are currently being built. But then it's, we can't solve it with just land acquisition because there's not enough land. We can't solve it by making the Fargo Pond deeper because it's cost prohibitive. We can't bring it to Randall Road through structures, even though it's already flowing there, because that involves the county. So, it's, we're going to do a little bit of this, we're going to do a little bit of this, and we're going to do a little bit of this. And it's like making a stew. At the end of the day, you end up with a great dish, but you got individual components that on her own probably don't taste so well.
Trying to find a way to fund some of that if we can do it quicker. It's not easy, I know that, but it's just trying to figure out ways to, you know, projects up above help make this issue exacerbate a little bit. Just wondering if we could get something from there to make it easier. Because I know you have some projects for that area already planned. I mean, there's no question, we've talked about them. So, I appreciate that. That's why I just asked if there was a quicker way to find some money before, to help solve it, but.
I think there's plenty of work here to keep myself and my staff busy between this and the culvert study and some of the other.
Oh, got you.
Studies that we're doing and it's, it's, it's going to be an intense, tense couple of years.
Well, no, but thank you. The blueprint is great to see. It really is. I mean, it may be, you know, the number is a little hi, is high, there's no question about it, but at least we kind of know what's facing us, which is always a good thing in a way, to know what's in front of us.
One of the goals of the city council and the strategic plan was to be a data-driven organization. So, that was one of the reasons why we did the study. And as we were putting a study together and we started crunching the numbers, we were like, you got to be careful what you ask for. Because for us, it's, the easy part is to identify the issues and then come up with the cost. I then get to hand it to the 11 of you and kind of sit back and watch you all prioritize how we move forward. So, this is one of those rare instances where I kind of get to sit back and go, here you go, and let me know how to move forward. This is what I suggest. We'll do what you say.
Is, you might have answered this already in a different way. Is the staff already prioritizing some of these projects? Or have you not got to that point yet?
We are. Like, we've, we've already started working on the Oakwood Drive issue. We're meeting in two weeks with IDOT for the Fargo structure, which is number eight. We are looking at the, the drainage improvements at Bennett and Dodson.
Good, okay.
So, there, there are, even though this document is, is technically being finalized tonight, being presented to the city council, staff has been aware of some of these early conclusions going back probably 18 months. So, we're already starting to implement them because, not necessarily because we're jumping the gun, but it's like, hey, we're doing a water main project on Route 25. Wouldn't it be cool if we can knock out Dodson and Bennett at the same time, which is literally right across the street, and finish this off and then just be done with it? Even though we're being a little premature, it's still a valid project.
Thank you.
Mr. Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. Alter Person Casarag seemed to leave the horse alive on the, on the rural cross-section street, so I'm going to, I'm going to try and beat that. I was surprised, because, because I know historically we've had discussion, similar discussions on the rural cross-section around Geneva High School.
Geneva High School and in the neighborhood bounded basically by Achiever, Dunston, Forest View. I'm surprised that didn't show up as its own shaded area. Is that because of things we've already addressed, or just lack of feedback over there? Or did Greenhouse Point actually solve some things?
I, you know, I hear what you're saying. In the Forest View, that was the only area that showed up as there was any concern there.
Okay, because I know some of the residents back there, and it's not my ward, but I care for them.
What, there were a lot of ongoing concerns before Park Place was built?
I'm sorry?
That that area had a lot of significant groundwater issues. And the construction of Park Place really helped with some of those issues further to the south, actually.
You're talking about Riverbank or Park Place?
I'm sorry, Riverbank. I did say Park Place, didn't I? Yeah, Riverbank. One of the other issues in Portion Eight, where we have ongoing drainage issues through the sideyards as it gets tributary to the structure underneath Route 31, the works progress structure referred to, that IDOT has acknowledged that in their own analysis, that the infall, so the west side, is too small to get the water through. So it's actually has a narrower diameter on the east side than it does on the west side, the discharge of the forest preserve. Now, that could just be because it's almost a hundred-year-old structure, and it's just deteriorated over time, and it's compressed itself. It could just be that they thought that was sufficient when they built it 100 years ago. But as we're working with IDOT to ensure now that that has the adequate capacity to get that water through and discharge into the pattern that it's in.
And then going back to the high school area there. So those dollars, something you said in the subsequent answer, you know, were, those dollars look at putting in additional infrastructure, but that water has to transit to that new infrastructure. So does that number include improving clearing out silted and swales, or is that just a maintenance?
Well, the, for the Geneva High School area specifically, all of that infrastructure is tributary to a large trunk sewer that's over 60 inches in diameter. In fact, it's an elliptical pipe at one point. So none of it, it discharges to the Geneva Golf Club ultimately. So it doesn't hit an open channel, really, until the golf club.
So...
If I could interject.
Sure.
While we were doing the review of this area, there was a rather hot discussion at Public Works amongst staff and the consultants as to what's the best way to address the drainage in this issue in this area. We looked at curb and gutter, just saying, we're going to modernize the street, there's a road program, we're going to put in curb and gutter, underground structures, and, you know, make it go. And that causes a lot, that has a lot of political consequences. People like the rural cross-section. Then we discussed, well, if we're going to maintain the rural cross-section, are we going to regrade, I almost said what we, something else, but regrade the swales to reestablish positive drainage to get it to the corners? Well, the problem with that is that over the last 60 to 100 years, residents have grown accustomed to being able to park on the street. Now, if we reestablish the drain swales, there's no on-street parking, or it becomes extremely limited, because the ditch is there, and people end up in the ditch. So it's, again, there's consequences to that. So, again, it came up with a hybrid solution, which is, we're going to put in conveying structures with structures mounted not in a curb line, but in the turf, and to capture that water and then get it to that trunk system and get it moving throughout the neighborhoods. With either sump pump collection lines, we call them header lines, to collect the sump, offer sump pump connections, or to run structures into the rear yards where we know that there's pounding water, and then put another structure in that rear yard, and then run a structure up the side yards to get it out to the street. So it's, I think we probably spent probably a good two months just in that area of, and we did come up with the price to convert the roads to an urban cross-section, which is what curb and gutters refer to. And that is in the drainage report. It's briefly mentioned, because it increased the project by about another 8.7 million, something in that range, which we thought was quickly taking it out of the realistic range to do this.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Whoever lived, you've seen a hot discussion about drainage inside the Public Works building. I tell you, that, that...
Just for the benefit of, and I know you've shared this before, Rich, but out of curiosity, Rich and Brian and Craig, how many miles of storm sewer, storm sewer are there in Geneva? That's right. I know. You should, approximately.
I want to say it's close to 86. I know we have more sanitary.
Sanitary is over 100, correct?
It's 108.
108. That's a lot of patchwork, isn't it?
It ranges from rotted out tin whistles. We had, well, this is before your time, so it's got to be at least four years ago, a tin whistle, which is steel culvert, it's referred to as a tin whistle in the industry, across Jefferson just collapsed, just the whole road, you know? And we had to drop everything we were doing and rebuild that. And, you know, it wasn't even kind of like there's money in the budget to do this. It's like, we're going to do it, and then we're going to figure out how to, we're going to budget, you know, how we're going to show it in the budget later. But, so that's what we're trying to avoid also. And some of that structure, it's just old, and some of that structure is in the wrong place, and some of that structure is just, they used whatever was laying around, or they could find, beg, borrow, or steal at the time from other communities, because it's just a hodgepodge of stuff sometimes. It's really what makes my job interesting.
Anyone else? Ms. Mayor.
I just want to give a little context that when I was a kid, our street flooded, Long Meadow flooded on a regular basis. And I know there were a lot of other areas of the city that did. So there's been a continual improvement in drainage in the city, I believe, over the years. And I think this is great. We have all of it kind of laid out in front of us, and we can budget appropriately. I don't know what to do about that high school area. That seems really complicated to improve that and make it work with, you're saying that the inlets would be in turf, not in, not off of the street. So it's, do those wear okay, or?
The biggest challenge we face with rear yard inlets, and they're usually covered with what's called a beehive around, so it's a structure with a little bit of a circular hump on top of it, is that people get tired of looking at them. So then they screen them with mulch or other landscaping, which is fine when it's dry, till it rains, and all that mulch gets washed into the structure, and then it clogs the structure. And that is predominantly what we're finding in the Eaglebrook subdivision. Not that I'm throwing anybody under the bus out there, but once those structures get compromised, then they get buried. And it's not uncommon, Cam was here last week, Cam Zabel, RGS technician, where we're finding infrastructure that's not shown on our aliases, because it's been buried and just...
I believe his comment was, it's like a treasure hunt.
It's a treasure hunt.
Yes.
I believe that was the comment that'll live forever. Yes. We have one of those beehive sections near Rosenfelder Court and Caneville Road, and it's in there in the middle of a beautiful planted garden. Yeah, it's amazing. I'll just...
And I had no idea we had so many muskrats. I'm just really impressed by that information, though. When is muskrat season?
That, I don't know, but I...
You Captain and Tenille?
Yeah. I almost dated myself by saying that, too.
We have a guest with us as well. Do you have any questions, madam? Come on.
I just, I wanted to thank Mr. Babica. I've been hounding him with my emails, wondering when there would be, because I came to the open house.
Exactly, yeah.
I had some finding in my house.
Right.
That had never occurred in the 40 years we were there. But it happened when we had that fort as a ring.
I got it. That's good.
But I'm still curious and wondering even maybe if there's something in our area that's in the study.
We're going to talk a little bit about the area where this young lady lives, and if you want to address that.
That would be Dodson and...
So you, do you want to go back? Can you actually pull up, I think it's number two up there? Bennet and Dodson?
Bennet and Dodson?
It's then it's 17, then. It's either two or 17.
Zoom in on it?
Go to the project map, if you don't mind, because as long as she's here. And what I am going to do is, after the City Council has seen it tonight, is I'm going to take the pages out of the drainage basin study and email them to you.
Those aren't in the presentation, though. That one, the only ones...
I know, but you have the overall capital budget.
Oh.
I know that. I have asked a lot of questions about downspouts and ordinances.
Right.
And, and...
May I?
Yeah, Mrs. Klein, you haven't hounded anybody. You've been a regular participant in the dialogue, and we appreciate you investing your time to be here tonight. So thank you.
17, which one was it?
It's this one. So that must, yeah, that's it. It's, must be number two, then.
It was number two.
Yeah.
Bennet and Dodson?
Bennet and Dodson. So this is the area, Mrs. Klein, that you're at. And what the recommendation is, is that we're going to put some structures in on Dodson Street and try to capture that flow as it's coming down the grade. There's a fairly, sorry, there's a fairly substantial grade separation as the water is flowing from the east to the west. And the way the relatively flatness of the Route 31 is the low curbs on Route 25 on the west side. The water comes down that grade and basically overwhelms the crown, and then overwhelms the curb, and then you actually have a ramp going into your house, or a ramp-like structure, is probably the best way of putting it, that only encourages that water to get up your door. So what we're going to attempt to do, and this is the project, actually, that we're going to try to include in the water main project on Route 25, is put two structures in east of the intersection of 25 and Dodson, and try to capture, reconfigure that curb line to divert more of that flow into the structures to limit the likelihood of it overtopping Route 25 and then hitting the curb, and then adversely impacting the property.
And we should be able to resolve that in 30 to 40 years. So that should be good.
I'll let you know how that goes.
Yeah, let me know how that goes. Anyone else in the dais for any of these distinguished gentlemen, before we, there is no action tonight. We appreciate the, obviously, the good work, the long work, the tediousness of it. Mr. Kocarag?
Are we going to get a copy of the presentation?
Nope, it's all private. We will see nothing. And we will vote on $17 million just for the hell of it. Yes, it's going to be posted tomorrow on the website.
Great.
We'll also receive a copy as well.
It was, it was not our intent to print out hard copies.
Right. No, electronic is...
Electronic. But there will be a hard copy at Public Works, and I'll make sure that the city administrator has one here at City Hall also.
But it will be posted to the website like we post to all our presentations, yeah.
No, I just want to say thank you for all the work that went into this. I remember being over at the high school area with Rich years ago, and I think, Mike, you were there. And at the time, what you were telling us about the rural cross-sections, it just was overwhelming. And we talked about how, how are we going to get the rest of the city to care about this one neighborhood that was built a certain way that people were really into at the time. And I just really appreciate the macro level of this, and that it's really looking at the city as a whole. And I love the kind of roadmap feel of it, that, I mean, this is a really complex issue, but I feel like when I get this report, I really do feel like I'll be able to, you know, I like that you kind of really dove into each piece. But again, it's a benefit to the city as a whole. So, thank you.
In a geekish sort of way, it actually was kind of fun.
In a geekish, let that be the headline tomorrow.
Yeah. It's what we live for in Public Works.
Thank you again, gentlemen. Good to see you.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Public comment? New business? No one's joining us remotely, I don't believe. Anyone from the dais? New business? Yes, Mr. Kocarag?
I have a procedural comment about our last meeting, where the question was called in a committee. And I guess it just really bothered me, and I wanted to bring that up tonight. I did a little research in Robert's Rules, and please question me, as I'm certainly not the expert in Robert's Rules. But it's specifically prohibited to call the question, or what's known as the previous question, in Robert's Rules 16-4, or 16-4, I'm not sure how you refer to it. But it's later explained that in order that there be no interference with the assemblies having the benefit of the committee's mature judgment, motions to close or limit debate are not allowed in committees. And I just think that, that concept, I'm not at all frustrated with the chair at the time. I'm not at all frustrated that Mr. Sandak didn't understand the details, you know, to that level of Robert's Rules. But I think it just made sense, and it really stuck with me, and it's been bothering me all week, that any one of us feels like they control the questions or the feedback being offered in our committee decisions. I think the comment was, we're going down a rabbit hole, which was inappropriate, I think, for an alderman to make. That's a, that's a chair's certainly appropriate. And, you know, I just wanted to throw it out, if nothing else, so that we know for the future, based on my understanding and my research that I did on Robert's Rules this week, that it's simply not allowed in committees.
Mayor, Mayor, may I come in? Thank you. I asked to call the question because I thought we were beating a dead horse, and I shared my opinion that we were going down rabbit holes. We ended up voting on whether to call the question. So for you to say, one alderman decided, is inappropriate. We voted to call the question. So thank you for sharing your opinion. I shared mine at the time.
It's not an opinion. It's Robert's Rules. I'm citing Robert's Rules, not an opinion. And I did vote no when you made the motion.
I didn't say it was unanimous. So, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Kilburt?
I think probably in that case, then probably the appropriate motion would have been to limit discussion, which I believe in committee could be allowed.
Anyone else? If not, oh, Ms. Berger.
The chair, that meeting, this probably leads me to think that, again, our thought of cutting off meetings at 10:00 PM is probably a good idea, because partly the reason I, that our legal counsel kind of allowed me to move forward as I thought appropriate with that, I did allow us to call the question. And honestly, I was exhausted, and I thought most of us were pretty exhausted. I don't know if I would have made the same decision at 9:30. So, and we've done it again, again. I can't, I can count on, you know, probably close to 10 times where we've gone late past 10:00 PM, because it's like, well, we're close, we're almost done, we've come this far. It just makes me think again, if it happens again, if I was chair, I might see if we want to continue till the next meeting. So, thank you.
Of course. Any fun news?
Well, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to congratulate Mayor Shoki on the naming of their government center in Batavia after the mayor that served for 41 years. So I know everyone here in Geneva congratulates Mayor Shoki on the naming of the center and wish him well and years of long service. wish him well and, and years of long service.
Well said.
I move that we named a lectern for Mayor Burns.
I was thinking of a dead-end street with no lights.
Sorry, that would be a genderist.
Part of the drainage study? In compliance, ladies and gentlemen, with Illinois compiled statutes, section 120, chapter 2, C5, I entertain a motion to go into closed session on purchasing or lease of real property for the use of the public body. Motion by Kocarag, seconded by Mayor. Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Berghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilberg?
Aye.
Nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, one absent. We are in closed session momentarily. I'm going to turn off the mics until we switch off the video. And I will entertain a motion to return to open session.
So moved.
There's a motion by, I think it was Bruno, seconded by Mayor. Roll call vote to return to open session is in order.
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Berghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilberg?
Aye.
Kocarag?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
We're back in open session, ladies and gentlemen. If there's nothing further for the benefit of this council or this community, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this special council meeting. Motion by Mr. Marx. All in favor of the motion to adjourn the special city council meeting? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, folks. Thank you all very much.